Getting first is Jim Hagwell, Jim, three minutes.
Good morning, thanks for having us this morning. So I'm a proud lifelong resident of of Port Angeles, and I've spent about forty years working to improve the place that we live. A lot of people ask me why I'm running. First of all, I think I have the knowledge, experience, and leadership to represent the most citizens of Port Angeles. I've been a business owner, I've been a residential developer, I've been inside of the permitting process in in the city, and I understand the housing market in our in our area. I've been deeply involved in the community in a variety of ways with the business and volunteering. And I think that I'm the most well-positioned person to bring balance to the to the city council. I'm not going to get into my my forty years of professional experience this morning. We can talk about that later. I didn't want to do that in my opening statement. But what I did want to talk about is probably two of the most rewarding volunteer efforts that I've put in in probably the last twenty years in Portland. The first one was recently the Portland Chamber of Commerce transitioned from a tourism promotion organization to a community development organization. And this was about five years ago where I helped lead the strategic planning process and then was the president of the chamber to move that organization to where it is today, and I'm really very proud about that. Another one was I spent about twelve years going to the high school and helping contemporary classes work on business plans. And the most rewarding part about that was that some of those students turned that into a business and even helped them find their way through college. So those were a couple of the most rewarding things. But I wanted to talk a little bit this morning about how I go about doing my work or how I would work as a councilperson. It's very clear to me as I've done about a hundred and twenty-five plus conversations with people asking what they think about the city, they're they're concerned, they're angry, they're frustrated about homelessness and encampments and sleeping, people sleeping on the streets in in Port Angeles. So I've I've been doing some research and I have I have an idea of a plan and I'm going to have to on my rebuttal go into it a little bit further. But I think that this this situation that we're in, I sense the frustration. I've heard it loudly clear. That that it affects people's quality of life here. That there's public and health safety issues with this. There's environmental impacts, and I think mostly it affects the psyche of our of our community. And I'm going to talk a little bit more in in the rebuttal part about specifically an idea that I that I have about how we can begin to make a significant impact on this. I don't think we can make it go away completely, but I think that we can we can make an impact on it, and I'm gonna I'm gonna set that up for my next one minute on the opening statement. Thank you.
Amy, Amy Miller.
Thank you. Excuse me, can you guys hear me okay? Good morning, thank you for having me. Also, thank you very much for rediscovering Graffiti Garden. I don't know if all of you guys who are here in the room were a part of that, but it's so very much being used and very much appreciated. So thank you very much. And now I'm going to tell you who who I am. I am a social worker and I've worked locally for the last eight years out in the field alongside first responders. Our Port Angeles Police Department, our Port Angeles Fire Department, building the program Rediscovery. I started by volunteering my time with the police department because I saw a gap that I could fill. And now our community has an outreach program that employs twenty people. Most of those people with histories of recovery. I developed that program and it's still being talked about across the country to represent best practices in outreach services. I received local recognition as citizen of the year in twenty nineteen. And most importantly, I have helped hundreds of people who had no one else in their corner when they were struggling. And I'm incredibly proud of that work. I have impacted actual lives. During this time, I experienced many rewarding and frustrating interactions. I wish I could share many of those stories, but what I'll say is I've met with over five hundred unique individuals, had thousands of interactions with them. And it was never the people that frustrated me. The people like Emma, who I met at a park picnic, a veteran living on the street after a house fire destroyed her home and her ability to feel safe indoors. Robert, who I met during a wound cleaning with a community paramedic, who wasn't provided the support he needed when he was housed. And people like Sherry, who I met outside a community meal being held at a local church, who is currently homeless and seeking substance use treatment while in her first trimester. Our community is hurting and people want to heal. So it was never the people that frustrated. It was always the system, the barriers. The system that prevented Emma from obtaining her VA benefits, causing a two-year wait for appropriate housing while she was pushed from public space to public space. The system that left Robert on the street and banned social services while seeking treatment for the cancer that was killing him. The system that left Sherry on the street after successfully uniting her family, being denied a home for failing to respond to a piece of mail that was mailed to generals. My job as a community change agent went from engaging with people and helping on an individual level to advocating for equal access and holding myself and my team accountable on a on assistance level. The work I did has helped to change the landscape of local service provision and it is improving. We are focused on solutions and solutions to the gaps and the barriers that still exist. I have made an impact, but there is still more work to be done. As I saw the need to work on systematic solutions, I became involved in the city council. I wanted a chance to impact a larger system, to help direct the city's interactions to the good of all of its residents. To help people, to help develop the policy that seeks to embrace the city's values of being a compassionate city, to be a voice in a room that isn't always welcoming to people like us. Thank you for having me today. I'm honored to have your vote for Port Angeles City Council. Position number five, yeah, coming up, and I'm excited for the opportunities to have with you.
Jim, do you have a follow up?
Yeah, so let me let me finish this up. So today, there is no strategic comprehensive plan at the city of Port Angeles to deal with this issue. And so what I'm proposing, or I and I've done some research and I even I'm modeling it out of what's happening in Everett, that there are really three, and this is what the city of Port Angeles has a governmental entity to do. There are three participants in this plan. The first is code enforcement, the second is rediscovery, and the third is the organization called 4PA. And it really has three parts. Many of you have listened to Brian Smith talk about how us as private citizens should protect and prepare our property to be safe. I'm suggesting we do the same thing with our with our public spaces. And and this comes in the form of landscaping, signage, and lighting. And if you've seen what's happened to Veterans Park, that's an example of what protecting and preparing your property is all about. That's number one. Second is is enforcement and engagement to go out and engage those people in a proactive manner to give them the help they need and move them to a better place than sleeping in a tent in the valley or laying on the sidewalk for three days. I think we can be better than that. And lastly, is creating a pipeline of services. We we need to get those people in a pipeline that gives them the support they need over a long period of time. So what I'm suggesting is that there is a strategic plan that's adopted by the city formally with those partners to begin to address this. And what does success look like? It needs to be a visual difference that we see as citizens that we know that those people are getting are getting help. So I heard it, I listened, and that's what has come out of my my interactions during this campaign. And that's how I go about my work. If I'm hearing from you that that there's a problem that needs to be addressed, then I'm going to take that on and see what we can do to alleviate. So I look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Amy, I'm gonna give you two minutes.
Thank you. We'll be fair. I think that that sounds like a great plan. I think I support a lot of what you just said. I think I have supported it when it when I heard it from Joe Dischella at 4PA. I I think this is not a new idea. I think it is something that has been being talked about and being put into planning and action for at at least several months, if not over a year. I'll be with that. Thanks.
Okay, questions?
The city council has a, what is it?
Yeah.
I would like both of you to comment on the, I think it's either, I think it's a point one percent tax increase.
Transportation.
That guy, yeah, would you both talk about?
Okay, let's go to Amy first on that.
Okay. Yes, that was a really difficult decision to make. Raising taxes is not something that anybody wants to support or really necessarily talk about, especially in in the public, right? So it was a really difficult decision that was not taken lightly. I did support it. I do think that there are there are good reasons to support it, some of those being that it does capture other folks that come into town. It captures their their funds as well. And and a lot of what I've been hearing, what I've been hearing knocking is also outside of the social concerns is, you know, that our roads are falling apart. And so it does provide additional funding to address specifically issues with our our roads. I do think that we need to continue to advocate at the state level that we have the ability to increase revenues outside of raising taxes. I think that's something that is future focused. As for right now, I think it was sort of the revenue generating low hanging fruit.
Jim, do you support it?
So I mean, I probably would approach it a little bit different, but in the end, I probably would have supported it. But this is how I would have approached. First of all, I would have been asking many more questions upfront about that tax, particularly what are the priority projects that we're going to invest in? What what are we going to do with that money, number one? Number two is I wouldn't have gone with a councilmatic decision-making process. The council did this without a public hearing and without input from from the citizens. So I wouldn't have done it that way. And thirdly, I would have made a a policy decision at the city or recommendation and motion that that money needs to be leveraged four to one. For every tax dollar that we're going to put into a project, we need to generate four other dollars to do those projects. Okay, and that was a policy. That was a a recommendation that I made in dozens of communities around the country. If you're going to invest your dollars, you should you should be able to leverage those dollars four to one. And I believe that very strongly. So that I would, I probably would have agreed with it, but I would have taken the approach differently than what we've done.
Amy, do you have any follow up on that?
I do. So we did ask questions. I we had a several hour work session, more than one, where we were able to have those conversations. Those are public record. You can find the video of those. So there was a lot of discussion about different ways that the city can generate revenue because everything that we want change requires money to do so. So we did have ample opportunity to ask a lot of questions. We do a lot of research. That was not something that, like I said, was taken lightly. Always a discussion on that. And there was opportunity for public involvement. We had an ordinance reading twice at the city council meeting, and we had opportunity for the public to be involved in those discussions before we went ahead and approved the the extent taxes. So
Jim, back to you.
So again, I, there there was no public hearing. Yes, the council discussed it, but there was not a public hearing. Allowing public input on that that specific subject. So again, I would have, I would have approached that differently. Whenever we're going to raise taxes on someone, I think that there should be a more open public process on that to have that discussion within a public hearing on that subject.
What's your public hearing name?
Excuse me, no, we had the public reading at the city council meetings and invited the public to come in and speak on that. Yeah.
Okay. All right, who else? All right.
I heard your opening statements, the word relocate as it dealt with homeless. Where would you relocate people?
Jim?
So Serenity House, for example, has vacancies. My research is that they are not running at full capacity. That's just one one location. So what I'm proposing is the initial start of of a plan and an idea. Do we need potentially another different child of 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 housing? I mean, we did it once before during COVID. We did a social distancing step. We did those kinds of things. So I think that can be done, but the commitment comes on the front end of this, which is we're we're going to say no in certain areas that we as a city are going to do better than having people sleeping on the streets or sleeping in tents in Justin Webster Park. But we're going to say yes, that we've got a place for you to go and you to stay. Okay, but the but the no part comes first to set a standard that that's what we're going to do in the city. So the the broader citizens of Port Angeles have a feeling of comfort to go into Justin Webster Park or to go down the waterfront trail. That's what I've heard. People are disturbed, they're concerned, they're angry that we haven't made progress. And what I'm suggesting is a commitment to make progress that is visually and impactfully, you can tell that there's been a difference.
You really didn't answer the question, where are you going to relocate?
Serenity Serenity House is one place.
Have you asked Serenity House if they're open?
Yes, they're coming down right now and they will pick up individuals and take them to Serenity House.
A hundred people. I'm just, I'm I'm trying to pin it down. Some people say we ought to incarcerate them for thirty days. Some people say we
I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that. I'm saying the first part of this, when, as they do now, when they go up to an individual that's been laying on the street in the three days, they're going to talk to them and find out what their needs are. And I'm saying there's got to be a better place than allowing that individual to look to lay on the sidewalk at First and Lincoln for three days. Okay, and I'm suggesting to be more, a plan to be more proactive. There is no plan now. There is no agreement or formal understanding of how we're going to proactively deal with this. And that's what I'm suggesting.
My turn?
Yes, ma'am.
So recognizing this is a really hot button issue, and I have a lot of experience here. Serenity House is full. It's actually housing people over capacity some nights, having to put in additional sleeping units. They they had to do an entire extension on their building in order to overnight stay the people that we were already, we already had when that extension went in. I don't think I will ever use the word relocate in my way of discussing this, but I think there is a lot of things that we can do. I think we need to advocate for stronger enforcement or teeth, if you will, in our Ricky's Law, which is a part of involuntary treatment for people who are struggling with substance use disorder because it does take some time away from the substance in order to help people make rational decisions about what their life looks like. And I also want to bring it, bring it back to the the facts of the numbers is that the highest number of homeless individuals in our county and our city are elderly women living in their cars. And so I think that there's some things that the council can put in place to make sure that these individuals are also being served and being recognized as residents of our community. They've been here for years and they're being moved off their properties for various reasons. I can share with you those stories. But there are a lot of things that the city can investigate and research and decide on that can help these individuals feel safe. That can range from safe parking areas to advocating at the state level for money so that we can build skilled nursing facilities or assisted living facilities. We have one in our community. We are an aging community. We need, we need infrastructure so that folks that are are actually the people who are becoming homeless have a place to go.
John, you answer your question?
Oh, yeah, I I think so, but I but I but the whole issue to pawn it off on somebody else, it needs a city action versus just, okay, you guys take them. I that that caught my attention.
Let's go back to Jim.
The city only has certain functions. Currently, the city does not manage, operate a shelter. There are other people that are doing it, that are professional organizations that are doing that. I don't think the city should get into that into that business. Let the other people, like Serenity House or or these other organizations, Peninsula Behavior Health, those are professional people to do that. The city currently does not have the expertise or the resource to do that. Its function is is safety and security and preparing and and the the public property and the code enforcement role to to help benefit the broader and and the broader citizens, the most citizens of Portland. So I think that's a, that's an important distinction is what does the city do? And that's the part of my plan is those are the functions that I think the city in partnership with 4PA can do better. That's what I'm proposing.
And the city?
But some some communities have taken the city's responsibility by incarcerating. So it is some cities have taken that step and saying that's
Are you supporting that, Jim?
I, what I am supporting is is an initial needs assessment. Okay, when they, which they do now. But I'm I'm saying we need to include 4PA into a formal arrangement that's sort of like the tip of the spear. They're the lead dog in this in this path that we're on. Where that needs assessment happens, if they're doing something that's that's illegal or criminal in in its context, maybe they need to be incarcerated. That's not, I'm not saying that you just pick up everybody on the street and incarcerate them. I think we can find a better place for them.
Amy?
I think, thank you. I think that the city does have responsibility in becoming more active in that, and there's creative ways to do that.
Need to do more.
We need to do more, and we also need to be we need to be able and willing to step out of the box, saying this is how it's always been done. It's not working. And we need to come out of that complacency and try new things and be at least willing to talk about trying new things.
Thank you both for addressing this issue. I mean, it is big and we see how things can get out of hand in places like Seattle and Portland versus totally ruined neighborhoods and and the 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 look and feel of a city. And I don't think any of us want that. So I don't necessarily, I don't want to get involved in the technicalities of how that gets done. What I'm interested in is how do we fund it? As a city, if, you know, this is not a simple issue. In order to make change, money's got to come from someplace in order to make that happen, whether it's improving a facility, incarcerating people, you know, whatever, whatever tactic there is out there is going to take money. Where does it come from?
I think I I think it's got to come from multiple sources, and I think we can do better at chasing that money. I think what the city needs to do probably easily and first is to make formal partnerships with nonprofits because nonprofit agencies has have access to grants that a city entity may not or does not. I think that the city can really advocate at the legislative level also for that. We were successful in doing that years back when we needed to have a crisis respite incentive put into town. I think partnerships with nonprofits, partnerships with our tribal neighbors, I think also being able to funnel and prioritize money that is coming into the city in ways that will support those partnerships. And and I think I think we have wonderful community members here that have also stepped up. 4PA is being funded mostly by the community, right? They're being funded by people who care and want to be involved, and the way that they could do that is by giving a monthly donation. So I think there's all sorts of different ways that these things can be funded. I think it's expensive on the front end to do things the right way. And so it really is going to take a lot of partnerships and leaning on people who have those expertise.
And what's even done? How do we fund it?
So that's a good question, Norman. And in my time at the fair and also talking to other people, I heard numerous people have said, if I'm going to vote for you, don't let Port Angeles become Seattle. So I'm committed to do that. And I think that starts with a commitment that says we're going to, we're going to make a difference. We're going to, we're going to do better than we are today. And that's what my, that's what my commitment is. Currently, those three entities that I'm suggesting in this in this formal approach or formal plan are currently funded. Okay, what the back end of that is, we, that's going to take some additional work. As a councilperson, I believe my job is to set what the priorities are for city resources. Okay, and it does come down to priorities. And I and I'm listening to the to the citizens and they're saying this is, this is a priority. So that's where it starts with me as a commitment that we're going to, we're going to work on this. And we're going to, we're going to do better than we are now. So that's what I'm committed to right now. I don't know what it costs outside of what we're spending now. But I know that there are millions of dollars in this, if you want to call it mental health services, homeless, support services, whatever that, there's millions of dollars that are in that system. And I think I think there are resources available to get done what we want to get done, to make a difference.
Yes, and in the meantime, our wastewater pipes are over a hundred years old and and need to be also addressed. I think what I'm learning most on city council with my experience on the council thus far is that there is always another pipe. There is always a balance that needs need to be made. And so being able to lean on and support and encourage and be able to get to yes with our nonprofit partners and it's going to be essential to be addressing and managing the ongoing issue of not taking care of our families, not taking care of our our older folks that live in this community, not taking care of people.
Okay. Yeah. Well, let's let's see the new man. Okay, Kathy.
Jim, I heard you mentioned changing our shift and focus from tourist development to RV development. Can you tell me some of the key elements that you feel can be addressed with that perspective?
Were you talking specifically about the Chamber of Commerce? That was what I was
I know that's where it emanated from, but where can you see that going by work with the city council?
We're addressing this to both candidates.
Yes.
So you see how I answered that? First of all, I think that, so let me go back to the the way that I view in my decision making. I think that's important for you to understand as a as a voter. So first of all, economic development is fundamentally about investment attraction into a community. That means new dollars, economic development is new dollars that come into our community that help us pay for all of the things we're talking about. The tourism industry is a very important sector in that, right? Because people come here, they enjoy the experience, and they they leave money here. It's an important one of the legs of our our economic stool, and I think it's critically important. And secondly, that many of the tourism-related assets that we that we we benefit from, such as the BMX track, for example. Okay, so that that facility was funded partially by lodging tax dollars, which is generated from tourism. But it's also something that local citizens get to use twelve months out of the year. So I see a broader community development element to related specifically to that tourism sector. But but more specifically back to the Chamber of Commerce, right? The Chamber of Commerce historically was a lodging tax funded organization that did marketing and promotion of Port Angeles. That's really all they did. They transitioned into what I would call a community development organization that that is is doing events, it's doing in creating things, right? It's created the Winter Ice Village. We created it's doing the the work, the employment fairs. So they're doing things that help support the community, and that's that's what I'm that transition that I was describing. Did I answer your question?
Yes, I would try to go from point eight on C in terms of how are we broadening that scope so that we can address some of these other issues in terms of that important way of generating income that will come back to the citizens of Port Angeles and Palom County.
Right, and and, you know, through my work in dozens of communities around the country that I was helping them to get better. The one thing that I recognize the difference between a failing or struggling community and a community that is vibrant is the strength of their business organization. Was it effective? Was it a leader? Was it getting things done for the community? That was a distinct obvious difference to me in in some communities that they were leading to create those community development opportunities or events or whatever.
So Amy, Amy?
Okay. Thanks for the question. I'm not sure I I totally understand the question, like the answer you want to get to there. I don't know if you can rephrase that, or if you want me to just take a stab at it, I can do that too.
Essentially, I I think there has been a lot of focus on development of tourism and opportunity, you know, being a a different version of Victoria. So people will come and stay and make their money here because ultimately it affects the bottom line and what every citizen can access. So I want to know your perspective because it is a you have to have that foundation to bring the value to people on the street.
Yeah, thank you for that. I I appreciate the reframing of that. Yes, I think, I mean, I don't think we can, we're not going to get by on just being a tourist area because that's, you know, heavy in the service industry. You see what's happening already. Taco time is flown due to our staffing a couple of days a week, right? Like, so I don't think we're going to survive as a service industry. So I think what we what I'd like to see us do is have more opportunity for professionals, for young professionals to come into town or to stay. What I hear a lot of when I talk with people is people who are born and raised here, they leave. They get some experiences outside, and then they and then they come back once they have been established. I'd like to see us have some opportunity here so that people don't feel like they need to leave to get that either that education or that work experience and be able to bring that here. I think what we do and how we might do that, some ideas would be continuing to partner with the college in increasing their workforce and trade education pieces. We're really supporting our nursing our sort of new recruits and new nurses through our Peninsula College. We're starting to do that also with our substance use disorder professional so that people can get educated in the community and then go and work in the community in those professional capacities that we are really struggling to hold on to. I think, and again, unfortunately, everything comes down to, we also need to have some workforce housing available for folks, but if they're already living here, we're hopeful that they're doing so in a safe and stable environment. So that may not be as an increase of an issue. That's a really thoughtful question. Thank you.
I wish we could go for another hour, but we're approaching our our closing statements, if we could, for two minutes. Amy, we'll start with you.
Okay. Okay. So I I would not been born and raised here. I moved here in two thousand and fifteen, but I immediately got involved in the community. This same year I moved here, I started to volunteer with different groups in the community to clean up litter at the rest stop, to attending city council meetings, which I don't know if I'm proud of this, but became a date night for my family. We did ice cream with the Dairy Queen after, and now we have other plans. But that was when fluoride was a was a real hot button issue. So I've been involved. I immediately got involved in this community. I love this community. And I want to make an impact, and I think that I have already started to do that in my world, in the social work worlds, and the work with providing system systems help. And now I really am just getting started with the system. I started here in twenty sixteen, starting to organize the first, the actually the second annual international overdose awareness event, and I've been involved in subsequent years, including the one we just had in August. I organized a shelter challenge in twenty eighteen where other elected officials went to from both Port Angeles, the county and SCIM, which you spend a night at the local shelter in order to gain a perspective on what that was like, and that did result in some changes in our collective response to cold weather warming centers in the city. I developed a program of community change agents that has brought hundreds of thousands of dollars into this community and is currently employing twenty employees. I have fostered a more cohesive and collaborative service industry in Port Angeles, and I know how we can compromise by listening and doing so with an open mind and being able to have my mind changed. I am fueled by our desire to create a more inclusive, compassionate and equitable Port Angeles for all of us, and firmly believe that by working together, we can shape our city's future. We can create a community where we all feel welcome, we all feel valued, and we all feel safe. Excuse me. I'm dedicated to addressing homelessness head on by implementing effective long term solutions. Some people may choose to build fences. I choose to build communities. With your support, I think we can bring bring around real change. As somebody who is a former coresponder with our police department and our fire department, I have their support. And I also have a unique understanding of real life issues that those men and women face and how the city can improve their experiences both on the job and on. I've been working directly to address key priorities in our community, and I'm committed to improving public safety and ensuring funding to maintain community based programs while also prioritizing safe staffing levels. I promote economic development by advocating for vacant building policies that encourage growth and progress. And I plan to support initiatives that enhance housing opportunities while addressing environmental threats. I believe in transparency, community engagement, and working collaboratively to make our city a better place for everyone. I'm asking you to support me because it's the right thing to do for all of us.
All right, Jim?
Thank you, John. Jim, thanks for having us today. And I think it's clear that I have the past passion, the knowledge, the experience and proven leadership to be an effective council person for the most citizens of Port Angeles. And this, my professional and community service background has led me to this. I've been doing, I've been working for the Betterment of Port Angeles for forty years. And and this is the culmination of of my work and me personally that has led me to here. I think this council needs balance. And I think I'm the person that can bring that balance with that knowledge and experience. I've worked with dozens of communities and have recognized what makes communities successful and what ultimately has them struggle and not be able to become good communities. First of all, I'd like to send a thank you out to the the hundreds of people that have contacted me to say, Jim, I want your sign in my front yard. That's a very humbling thing to be, but there are there have been hundreds of people that have said, I I want to support you, and I'm I'm grateful for that. I asked for your vote on the ballots come out on October eighteenth. The election is on November seventh. And I hope that you you support me and and what what you think I can deliver for the council. If you want more information about me, you can look at jim jimhagwoodforcitycouncil.com. There's some more information about some of my thoughts on these subjects or also on Facebook. So again, thank you to the Rotary Club for a great discussion this morning, and I'll hang around for a while for for other questions.
Thank you very much.